I just.
All right, we'll call this uh October twenty third work session to order if you join me for a moment. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible we look very in charge of its peril.
On item number two, which is citizen comments. Right here who has. What do you look like? Moving on to item three six A, the fire department facility study, and I think we'll turn over chief Meyer for that.
Good evening, Mayor Councilors, I'm gonna actually. Interviews Quinn and Brooke from CNH Architects, so they were the. Group that spent since April with us going through our facility needs as far as the fire stations go. We met monthly looking at kind of our short term and long term. Needs for the fire departments and with that I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. I'm Quinn Hudson, I'm the principal of CNH, and with me is Brooke Jacobson, another principal. Um and uh. Turning the PowerPoint up but. Um but it's just a pleasure to be here tonight and and meet with you and tell you a bit more about the study. But certainly feel free to ask questions anywhere along the way or else be kind of questions at the end. Um a little bit about us just quickly, we are a full service midsize architectural firm. Uh built a fifty years experience and we specialize in public safety projects particularly fighting. Uh with over twenty new and remodel stations and uh over that that number of studies. So with that, uh the process that we went through, I'll give you a little idea of what we we did in the in the study process. Uh first of all, when there was a lot of staff interviews and learning more about the stations, tours of the stations, things like that. Um we we've talked about what the changing needs of the station are and how that impacts their operations now and into the future. And what are, you know, some of the issues that the facilities haven't been experiencing over time. But we got to know what, you know, what the current state is and some of the things about the future. Uh we then went into a detailed review of each building and the sites around them. Uh looking at their layouts, uh what their, you know, get them in the plans, looking at everything what's available in those buildings. Um a great walk through and a study of that. And we also looked at city ordinance requirements for any expansion related things that identify the, you know, the constraints within the site. And then uh did some comparisons of that to fire station design standards. Uh that would be typical in in the remodel uh facilities, you know, during, you know, at this time. Uh and from that, we developed a space needs program like this, what the needs for each station are. Uh, you know, looking into the future, uh the equipment for staffing for operations and flow. With that, uh we uh give you a little overview of really quickly of each station, so station one or from Holyoke. Uh was built in nineteen eighty five, it was remodeled twice, uh once in ninety five, once in two twelve. Uh and uh metal door additions, so it gives the the base building an age of thirty eight years, uh it's. Uh just short of twelve thousand square feet. Yeah, and then specifically we'll touch on apparatus, there's four apparatus bays. Two of which are back end and the two of which are then be drives through uh. Uh station two, uh which is uh on Dodd, uh built in nineteen seventy six, a little bit older. Uh been remodeled or additioned uh in eighty five, ninety one, two thousand and three. So even the last of that was twenty years ago. Uh forty seven years old for the base building, a small station at just under six thousand square feet. Also has four apparatus based, three of which are back ends, only one that just pulled through. Uh station three, uh on Kenrick. Was built ninety, uh in eighty eight, excuse me, it's not been remodeled during that time. Um it's a again a five thousand square and forty one square foot, sort of, that'd be small station. Uh with two apparatus base, uh. One of which is back end, the other which is pulled through. And station four, uh which is built two thousand and two, that's remodeling in twenty twelve. Uh making the base building twenty one years old. Uh this is a little bit larger again at twelve thousand six hundred and thirty two square feet. Uh and again, on the apparatus base, we have three apparatus base, uh one of which is back end, the other two are pulled through. So what I'm gonna go through a little bit on this is we looked at conditions of the stations and and really identified some of the shortcomings. There's a lot of similarities between them, so rather than really looking each one into really the 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 report does a little bit more of that, but we're gonna evaluate them overall. Because there's a lot of repetition of what what the issues and concerns are within the facilities. So with that, uh. First of all, uh you know, top of the things we look at is how are the the building positioned for firefighter health? There has been a lot of uh. New information and change in the design of fire stations and and for that matter, just the fire service in the past ten years, particularly related to health. Uh there's been a lot of information and studies that have determined that firefighters are. Are exposed and 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 uh. Develop cancer at a rate many times, the uh that of the general population, and it has a lot to do with what they're exposed to during their their work. Particularly in in fire situations, uh where the toxins of. Plastics and other chemicals that are now commonplace in the players are. Part of what they're exposed to and and they personally, as well as as uh. Uh on equipment and gear bring that back to the station, yeah, so there's things we look at there. Um other things that we look at is mental health, it's also a significant area of that. Um. We had, and we have information on, we could back up one more if you could, I have a couple of.
There you go.
Yeah, so I I taught specifically on a cartilage separation. And we look at buildings that having hot cold zones and that's, you know, in in the new fire station. Design process and evaluation when to still remodel, we're looking at how do we separate the the areas that the toxin brought in until they decontaminate. And and work on that, uh and so that's something that just doesn't exist in a current station and none of your stations have that developed at this time at all. Nor would I expect them to, given they weren't built in the last ten years. Uh but that's, and then vehicle exhaust is a piece of that, they, uh while their overall systems in the air, uh in some of the buildings, none of them are tailpipe connected exhaust systems. Uh additionally, uh there's not adequate decontamination areas typically now in in a. Fire station standards, we would have areas where you would bring the gear, separate it from the rest and decontaminate that, clean it. Uh dry it and bring it back, that's in the current stations, uh the gears and the decontaminations all just mixed together in in within the station. And uh those toxins are available. Um in mental health support, uh there is um. You know, some facilities for sure, but there uh it certainly would be typically expanded workout and. And fitness areas, there's also commonly looked at areas for. Quiet uh to come back from uh sometimes some very serious situations that they uh are put in and. Have that opportunity to decompress and relax from that and try to move beyond the some of the events of the day. Um and within that, the other thing that we looked at, you know, as things are changing is uh. Uh providing areas for uh sleep uh and dorm areas, obviously as. A department transitions into having some uh full time staff that you're looking at doing. Uh you have uh a need for for those kind of sick dorm areas and. When we do that, we look at providing uh. A quiet, separated uh areas where sleep can be supported as much as possible, because we know that they can be interrupted at any time. So. That's finally, uh you know, or next I should say, we we look at safety uh throughout the stations. Uh you know, drive through bays in general are are safer, they're not backing in through the opening, quicker response, uh return around when they're not coming back. Um and then also looking at separation outside the building for zoning of um. Apparatus and public flow and some of the stations that's a little more mixed. And it's not nearly clearly defined as we'd like to see in a new station for best safety. And additionally in safety, uh there just in general, there's a lot of national best practices. That we uh incorporate in in uh new fire stations uh that aren't uh typically seen here. Uh building codes that that are changed over time, uh things that are more hazardous, like you see the yellow stripe in the middle there, that step. That can be a common tripping activity, it's just not done anymore uh in stations. And probably uh clearance around apparatus, as you can see in both the middle and the right uh photo there, that. Uh apparatus have grown uh over the years and uh many stations uh do don't have a sufficient room for the safe. Movement of the firefighters around them as they're preparing to respond. So I think the last thing I'd like to point out here that I think I didn't mention earlier, but. All the stations have a turnout gear in the apparatus bay, and that is uh again something that in the uh the past ten years we've looked at. At eliminating uh as much as we can, it reduces toxins in the in the bays. It also provides for a longer life of of turnout gear because uh to reduce the exposure to UV rays that that can have impact on them. Um another item that that we looked at that we see in uh. Today's uh fire station is built in training features. Uh this is an opportunity for the firefighters to be honing their skills, practicing the things that they have to uh recertify on. And do it in a frequent and easy uh location, we often look at areas where. You know, from stairwells, if they otherwise would have opportunities to go from apparatus bay up to an upper storage level. To uh training inside, outside. Uh but one of the advantages of building some of these items into the fire uh fire station is that um if. They're they're training, they don't have to leave the area, they're available to respond, and if a call does come in, they can set their things aside and respond. So it has less impact on the department and allows for a more frequent training. Here we're showing outside here, and this one moves to inside opportunities, there's a lot of training that we look at building in. Whether it be a smoke rescue, uh. Repelling, dropping into confined space in these. Or um uh floor breaks, some of these other training features on the left is a it's a just a training element that you can practice. Uh rescuing uh people out of basements and residences, so you can break in through the floor, pull them up. Uh drop down and things like that. On the right hand side is is opportunities to uh rescue off of a higher level. So this is, this typically we have a little bit taller tower within new fire stations and uh that. It is high enough that you can use a ladder truck, you can't normally just uh practice anywhere on. So the, and then finally, there's other opportunities uh that we build into new stations, so that would be typical, things on the left, we're looking at. You're learning on practice uh fire panels, so that uh. Then you can learn what to do when coming in and seeing uh different situations or rescuing uh off of balconies and other things like that from the outside. So that's a quick overview of training, uh those are things that are not generally present at any of the stations here. And you know, it's something that is an opportunity that new facilities typically have. Uh finally, the next areas we look at is some shortage of the space and that's significant throughout, uh especially with some of the smaller stations uh that. Really, this is, everything's packed in the same area, there's not the separation, there's just not room for everything that that's uh needed, and certainly not room for expansion within that. And then um. And that impacts, you know, that shortage of space and the organization impacts the ability for a well. You know, organized and functional building and certainly impacts operational efficiency uh within that building. And the last thing I'll mention is just an. Opportunity for uh sustainability and and energy conservation, obviously all the buildings were built with the same amount of. Energy conservation that you would have in a in a new building or in a remodeled facility, and so that's just something where. Obviously, some of the conditions there that there's higher energy use than. In today's fire station. Turn it over to Brooke to cover some of the uh station options.
Uh so part of our process was to evaluate uh the building program and the existing conditions of each uh facility to determine the scope. Of demolition, uh remodel, addition, or if a new building would best meet the needs of the department now and well into the future. Uh we looked at many different iterations uh for each of the sites to determine what was feasible on each site. Um to meet their needs and also what made fiscal sense um for each site. Um so we'll look at kind of the the final options out of all the different iterations that we went through uh in this presentation. Uh just what I look at is station one, there are two options for this one, so the the first option is a remodel and addition approach. Um what we looked at with this is that the majority of the existing structure could remain in place. And we could add on to the north side of the existing facility and the south side, so you can see the existing footprint is that dashed red line on the first and second floors. Um. Taking this approach, there are some concessions that have to be made on that, so that we're only meeting our primary needs, not all of our ideal best practice needs. And some of that, it is in regards to some of the spaces, aren't quite the ideal size they need to be, because we're trying to fit into that existing footprint. A little bit, um or as we're reutilizing the existing apparatus base, they're not quite the ideal width. Uh in depth that we would like to see in a brand new station, uh however, we felt it was, you know, the department was comfortable. Reutilizing those bays and then adding on a new bay that would get us the longer and um then longer width, or longer depth, excuse me, and wider bay, and that would help. Um. The first floor in this is a little bit more spread out, we're a little constricted, you'll see on uh when we get to the next slide, um based off of site restrictions. So the first floor, our public entrance is on the far right and are in the green and our station offices and that is the light blue and the lower, our kind of middle left corner there. So it's kind of a a long distance for them to go if somebody does arrive at the front entrance uh for public use. Um. And then the second floor, you can see on the right side, you can see that, again, the outline is in there in the red. And we're just fitting some of the existing spaces into there, so. Uh so on the site plan. You see the, again, the outline in red of where the existing station is, how this is situated on site. So you can see on that north edge of the property, we're quite tight to um the heritage site on the other side. Which is kind of what's restricting uh the building from uh being a little bit more efficient and it's more spread out in this layout. But we do have good separation between the public traffic and the firefighter and apparatus traffic, you can see there's a separate parking lot. Uh and drive for public park it on the far right, taking them to the main entrance. Um. With how close we are to the site, we have a very minimal buffer between the heritage building and uh the addition. Some of those spaces are public, but then also fitness and some of the residents, so they're quite close to the adjacent to the heritage center there. Um we are keeping the apparatus. Response uh exit in the lower left corner, the same as what it currently is now, which is still very close to that roundabout, which does cause some issues and congestion. And getting them out. Um but with this approach, we were able to add a new apparatus bypass lane on the south side of the building. Allowing apparatus to flow from east to west on this site without having to go out into. Traffic with like they currently do now to access um either side. Uh and that's a remodel and addition approach, would require phase construction to keep the station operational uh for the duration of construction. Uh so this is our option two. This is a all new building approach in this option, uh because it's an all new building, we are able to meet all of our uh best practices and programming needs. Um the layout's a little more efficient than the previous layout that you saw, we don't have those restrictions. Um as we're able to move around on site or position the building differently on site, so we can, we don't have that kind of elongated addition that we had on the last one. Um the public entrance on this is very close to the station offices, so if anybody does come, they can uh help them right away. And all the apparatus bays are an ideal and length. You can see it uh positioned on site, the existing uh station is kind of under the left side of the building there, um covered up in this approach. Uh but with this, again, we also have good separation of public and firefighter and apparatus traffic. Now the public parking is um enters off of Holyoke instead of off of County Road fifty on the previous one. The main entrance is very visible off of Holyoke as well from the roundabout there. Uh we have much a greater buffer between the the station and the heritage center as well. Um and the apparatus now responds on to uh County Road fifty and is much further away from the roundabout helping move by response traffic. In the all new building approach, uh this would also require phase construction to keep uh station operations. Operational for the duration of construction, just because uh it does overlap with the existing station. Moving on to station two. Um with this station, this site, we only have one option on this site. And that is an all new building approach, and the reason behind this is with the existing station and the way it was built. Uh the way that specifically that existing apparatus bays were constructed. Uh they are not able to be expanded upon, and that's kind of one of the first things that we look at. And some of those images you saw earlier that Quinn went through are from station two, where they physically just cannot maneuver around the apparatus that are in there. Um so with that, we would have to have torn down the apparatus bays and there's very little building left, so the I um the only feasible option in this. Approach was to go with an all new building. Um so with the all new building on site, all of our best practices and programming needs can be met, uh the building layout is very efficient. Uh we now have a um public entrance, the public entrance is right adjacent to the station offices. And our apparatus bays are of an ideal width and length. Uh so on this site, though, um we, it's a little tight to fit the building in, but we're able to make it work. Um some of the issues that arise is that with that roundabout construction, it does impede on what our buildable area is on the site, you can see the property. Lines do go out into that roundabout, um but we do have good separation of the public and fire firefighter apparatus, we're directing all of the public. Uh traffic um to the kind of north side of the site off of Dodd. And the um apparatus will still respond where they currently do now on to flag staff. Um. They are using that same entrance, it is still quite close to uh the roundabout, which does pose some issues for them in in congestion. Uh the the public entrance is uh quite visible from Dodd in this approach, uh unlike the current station now, it's kind of hard to find. Um even though this is an all new building approach, like uh the all new, previous all new building approach. This would require phase construction because we are building the new building on top of the existing building. So moving to station three, um on this uh site, we also have two options again to look at. The first option is our remodel and addition approach, so again, the majority of these existing structure would remain in place. Um you can see the existing footprint in that red dashed line again, kind of in the center of the first floor there. Um but again, with this, some concessions do need to be made, so uh it's because we're either trying to fit within um the existing footprint for some spaces. Or we have some inefficient spaces, you can see that wedge in between the north addition and the existing building. Um giving us some less than ideal sizes in in some areas. Uh our first floor is also really spread out in this approach, uh we have an addition on the north side and the south side. And with this, our our public entrance is kind of hidden on the backside of the building, and it's right adjacent to the fitness and residential area where the public would enter this facility. So looking at the site plan. Again, we have good separation of public and firefighter and apparatus traffic, the public uh traffic comes in off of the roundabout. And all of the firefighter and apparatus uh comes in off of Kendrick. There's uh no room on this site for a bypass lane for apparatus, unfortunately, so they would have to, if they. Were trying to go from um the west to east side of the building, they would have to come out onto Kendrick to reenter the site to access the backside of the station. You'll also see there is a sort of in the center of the site, there is an existing communications building. Um this restricted where the additions could go. Um and also restricted apparatus flow with onsite, so that's. How we're kind of at this more elongated footprint of this uh option. Our main entrance traffic, um and the apparatus response, response traffic all has to flow through the roundabout. Um except for anything heading north on Kendrick in this approach. And then with the remodel and addition, this would also require phase construction to keep the station operational. Construction.
That's why in this. Design. Why that communications building can't be.
Uh that's something that the city would have to make a decision on whether or not that it's feasible or or worth it. Um it's not a city, it's a, it's owned by Frontier. At this time, so it would have to be purchased from them and all of their stuff would have to be relocated.
It it's Frontier's main head in. To the city, so there's a lot of stuff there. It's not impossible, it'd just be costly.
Yeah.
This seems to be the very.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, when there's there on site, it seems like it's on the edge of the property because of all the trees that are there, but all of that tree is on that north portion of property, and so when we looked at it, it really. Kind of is almost right in the center of the property, unfortunately.
And so when you go to this next option where you're on the other side of it, is that acquiring more property?
Yep.
Did you guys consider that site the impact on the thirty five and fifty interchange on traffic?
We did not analyze it, I don't know if you have any thoughts on.
We did not. You mean traffic through there?
Yeah, what's there? I mean, that that roundabout is already.
Yeah, that. That'll stay. Like it is, the impacts are further up on Kendrick.
The corner there, right?
Where the um pizza, pizza, well, not even the pizza, but the um the strip mall where.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for our second option, we looked at an all new building approach. Um again, with all new building, we're able to be in all of our best practices and programming um needs. Uh the layout is very efficient, our public entrance can be very close to the station offices, and our apparatus bays are of an ideal width. Depth for this. So moving to the site plan, this is what you you mentioned, but this would uh require purchasing the adjacent site to the east to make this work. Um this uh creates a good uh separation between public traffic and firefighter and apparatus traffic. Uh the public traffic is still coming off of the roundabout like it does in the previous option. However, in this approach, our all of our firefighter and apparatus are now um entering and exiting off of one hundred and seventy fifth street. Which gets them away from the roundabout and the issues that the roundabout poses with construction or congestion and uh affecting response times. Um the public entrance is very visible from Kendrick as well as the roundabout area. The communications building in this approach does not appear in any way with the overall layout of the site. Um the uh. There's also room for now a bypass lane on the far east side of the site, so that apparatus can move. From the south side of the site to the north side of the site when they want to train on the backside. Unlike the first option where we didn't have that. So in this all new building approach, uh this would allow for the existing station to remain fully operational until the building is all done. And then um the station can move into the new facility.
Best of questions. And I think I've got an estimate, team's meeting. Um in this option, the addition. Is around, on the hard cost, around twelve and a half million. The building, a brand new building, is only. The one point three. It seems like it. That gap there, it seems like it should be more either, more where you, you explain kind of. How that is.
Sure, I don't know if you want to give, we, yeah.
Just gonna cover costs, but.
I I can start, you can certainly go in. Uh uh part of it is that there, there is a significant amount of of. Heavy remodel in the uh. Addition, you know, in the other station, plus a lot of of all new addition anyway. And then with the phasing, that's another piece that adds costs that would not apply to this all new option. So those two things are what makes it a lot closer than you might have thought, uh given. So those two things are what makes it a lot closer than you might have thought, uh given uh the fact that it some does use existing uh space. But of course, there's also land costs that we don't have in that.
Yeah, that's what makes it go up.
Well, that's in the hard cost, it's in the soft cost. I was just trying to compare apples to apples. Soft costs are kind of the same with the exception of land.
Yep.
So then I would have the reverse question for Station one. Why is that one somewhat more expensive for new construction than the remodel?
I think we're back to in that one, there's more of the existing building that's lightly modeled. And that probably brings, you know, cost out. If we're looking at at uh light remodel costs, so some are in the two hundred and fifty or so dollars a square foot or or less, depending on just what happens to these spaces. Some spaces is made to be painted, but uh where all new construction is, you know, closer to the uh four hundred. You know, four hundred and fifty five change. So it it it's just really that ability to use more of the existing building in that layout that it worked for. There's less of it that works that way, you know, in this.
Also too, the Station one, the existing footprint is twice the size of Station three. So we can have more areas that have uh more remodel than we do at Station three, so that's where that price starts to, you're just remodeling more than are on Station three.
Sure. I guess, is there a big design difference between Station, a new Station one and a new Station three?
They're very similar lands. For it for any of the all new approaches, they're they're very similar.
Does does the city own that land? It's owned by company U. So yeah, so is the land acquisition.
Uh one and I'll, I just throw out, one thing we did talk about is you do have that west side of, if if you were to go with this approach, you do have that west side of the property that's not being used. If that wanted to be parceled off for something else and sold, there could be a a trade off there.
Or you're sort of public benefit.
Yep.
Bigger frontier.
We can move to the Station four. Um so Station four, uh with the due to the size of the sites, uh the fact that the existing facility was relative, it's the newest of the stations, um and our ability to expand the existing apparatus space to get the ideal length on these, the remodel and addition approach uh was what made the most sense on this particular site. So we only have the one option for Station four of a remodel and addition. So again, with this, the majority of the existing structure remains in place. You can see the red dashed outline of the existing footprint. Um both mainly the first floor, there's just a real small mezzanine on the second floor. You can see that small square there, but um the apparatus bay is the I, an our ideal width and lengths with the addition um to the existing base, plus we have an another additional bay that's added on to the south. Um we do have some smaller concessions that had to be be made with some of the spaces. Uh just again, fitting within the footprint. Um but we are meeting all of our primary needs, just not all of our ideal perfect needs. And then um and some of that is is actually in, actually is in the addition with our new apparatus bay addition on the south, it's a little bit narrower than we would typically see. Part of that is to maintain our um excuse me, bypass lane. Thank you, I was blanking on the word, bypass lane on the south. So if you want to go to the next slide. So now you can see um the layout on site, the dashed red line again is the existing footprint. Uh you can see that bypass lane on the south. We're trying to make sure that we maintain that so apparatus can flow from east to west on this side without having to go out onto the road. Uh but again, we have good separation of public and then the firefighter apparatus traffic on site with the public on the north side. The firefighter um and apparatus on the east and south sides. This moves the main entrance to the north side of the building versus the east side of the building. Um so with that approach, it's not visible from one hundred and eighty fifth in this design. Um and then our apparatus response remains where it currently is uh on the west side of the building with access then uh from that side street directly onto one hundred and eighty fifth Street. Um and then with, uh again, with the remodel and addition, this would require phase construction as well. Uh to make, to maintain the uh keep the oper- the station operational during construction. Oh, the last thing we looked at um was what if we were to go from four stations down to three and combine two of the stations into one slightly larger station? So this is the combined station approach. Um so this would first reduce quantity of the facilities that you have. We would go down to three instead of four. Uh with and then all of our best practices and programming needs can be met in this larger station. Our building layout is uh more efficient than some of the remodel and addition approaches on the previous sites. And uh our public entrance uh is close to our admin offices that would move to this location. Uh our apparatus space are of an ideal width and length, and there's potential in this scenario to um for additional public spaces of desire or room for expansion is needed as well because we'd be starting with a new site. So for this combined station approach, um should be combining Stations two and four. Apologies, I don't think I said that. Um we uh looked at using a generic site of roughly four to four and a half acres is what we need for the square footage of what this combined station would use for the overall design. Um a site would need to potentially be purchased for this unless the city did have existing land somewhere that that can be used. Uh but with this approach, we can pretty much meet all of um our best practices. So again, we have good separation between the public traffic and our firefighter and apparatus traffic. Be situated so that it's visible uh from the street, depending upon where that occurs. Um and then we will have room for a bypass lane uh for the apparatus to maneuver on site without having to go out into traffic on um the main street. With this approach, we did look at the utilizing the existing uh central maintenance facility. Um and but what we looked at, what the site available at that current property is roughly about two point seven seven acres. So when we, to meet all best practices, when we say we uh we needed about four to four and a half acres, it just would significantly impact um our programming needs for the site if we had to try to fit uh what the department would like to see down from, you know, four to four and a half acre site to two point seven seven acres. Um so significant concessions would have to be made at that point. Um so but with building a combined station, this would keep two stations fully operational throughout the duration of construction with with uh no impacts to either station. When the station would uh finish construction, the two stations could then combine and move into one. And then also with moving to a new site, yes, there potentially isn't additional costs if you're purchasing property. You now have two existing facilities that could either be repurposed for other uh city needs or potentially sold as well.
I have serious questions.
Yeah.
Um how much of the training that we kind of covered is not part of the ABLE facility in Burnsville?
So ABLE is strictly for live burn. We do some training there. Um but as far as like the the stuff that was highlighted in the report and stuff is the ladder training, stuff that can be done at the station, so we're not taking a truck or that station to a different city to do the training.
Um on the combined sites. I was there a conversation about fact that si- uh Station three is a lot more marketable as a piece of property than Station two. I mean, there's no other use than Station two is on. So I think you'd have a very hard time um selling, and you might not have answered for that, but it's a thought I want to throw and talk about combining.
So I think part of the discussion about which stations were combined to create that it has a bit to do with positioning the station, you know, if we're going down to three stations, where in the city and and uh would those three stations be? And with one, for best response time, right? Uh so with one and three, um you know, portions of cities they're in, and two or four combined, it could be positioned to get optimal response time around the city.
We talked about just going down to two.
We did not look at that, no. Geographically, that that spans or that increases our response time to whichever side of that city if we go to two stations.
So when I talked to Burnsville, because I was trying to figure out how they did that, they said their response time is hitting all the marks. And they are in a really odd spot considering their um city size, et cetera. Um and yet they're hitting the marks, so um I'm just curious, you know, if we even had that discussion about just dropping down to two.
So two things with Burnsville, their their square mileage is half of Lakeville. I think they're at seventeen square miles or thirty eight square miles of the city.
That it was higher, okay.
Uh and then looking at response times as we do today, right now, we're their staffing station, so they have those trucks already staffed, so that automatically increases their response time. So right now with us in on in the role that we're in or in our staffing model of paging firefighters, that's just that delay from a response time si- site.
But if we had two sites, they'd be full staff like Burnsville, which is a square.
Correct, but we're still trying to, you know, the the geography is what's hurting us today.
See, and I have a hard to, I don't understand Site four not being, I mean, to me, if you think about now, one hundred and eighty fifth is going to go all the way through, it's to me, logistically is the easiest way to get anywhere in the city.
Right.
Because you can go in literally any direction.
Right.
Quickly, so I don't under- I don't understand abandoning four. Um I don't get that, so you can keep going, but I I just want to put that out there because I just.
Um what other thing I'll say about Burnsville is they have mentioned that they sort of do have a backup plan. If they foresee somewhat in the future, they might have to build a third satellite station somewhere based on all volumes as everything keeps increasing um in the geography, so it's they know that more than like, you know, they might not just be at two stations uh in the future, but that's what works for them right now.
Okay, I'm going to cover some cost estimate portions of this. Uh first, we'll be looking at short term costs, and that would be to do some very minor remodeling to each of the stations uh to just get a sleeping room. Uh this would not be the approach that you would find in any, you know, standard uh operation, you know, it would not be, you know, what we would see in most facilities, but it certainly would get you that initial opportunity as you are adding uh some full time staff in the next years. Uh we've looked at each of the stations and I'll talk about them. Doesn't mean that you would need to do all of them, uh but we are looking at what it would take to to get uh just a few uh uh dorm rooms and and a couple upgrades, a shower in some of them uh to for each of the stations. So first of all, in Station one, uh there is a a hard cost of of you know, a little over forty five thousand dollars to add those rooms. Um we have a factor for doing it in an occupied building um and in some contingency, so our total look for that would be about uh fifty one and a half thousand dollars, so. Um Station two, the current cost will be a little bit more involved, we're doing more items than that. Uh so it's eighty four thousand uh for hard costs and occupied factor. And contingency gives us about a ninety five thousand dollar remodel uh to do that. And I should mention that even in these, once we start adding dorm rooms, we're taking something else away to make that happen. In most cases, it's it's a education classroom. Uh that that is some piece that just is no longer available there, and they still need to do that in someplace, so it there are downsides in the light, we're definitely looking at the short term.
Their offices too.
They're all, I think, so. Excuse me, um Station three, hard cost is seventy five six. Occupied again and contingency brings us to eighty five, six fifty five for remodeling that station. And Station four is uh very similar, seventy five, uh nine seventy five. Uh with all the factors, gets us up to an eighty six thousand dollar um dorm room remodel uh process.
I was going to say, the plan right now would be the first station to do this would be Station four. That would be the six that we're planning on hiring next year would be based at four, and that would be the immediate need to do some sleeping quarters.
That's what the committee crew would say.
My question to you guys, I guess, is after reading the these materials, et cetera, um I feel like in some ways we're putting the the cart before the horse on hiring the um the firefighters ahead of actually having facilities because now you're doing short term costs and then you're doing long term costs. And so um I I almost feel like we should, you know, eventually, as we talk about this, um consider just having a delay depending on what our solution is to the situation, not that um I'm not saying that we we will have the full time firefighters. It's just really, is it now or do we wait a little bit until we actually have um things worked out? So I don't know, just kind of think about that because it's driving me nuts to have these short term costs and then long term costs, you know, the the depending on what decisions that we make and and the really, the discussion too is, you know, how many stations, so.
Well, related to that is, we asked the chief, so if we have six full time firefighters, they're proposed, the budget gets passed, they get hired, what timing are we looking at in terms of them being working on a station?
April first is our our timeline to have them onboard ready to go as far as that they're responding.
And then, you know, we're looking at adding more. We'd like to get up to the eighteen number, but you're talking probably past that at least another year, year and a half down the road, a year down the road before you added another group of full time firefighters.
So the the goal that was proposed would be six firefighters for the next until twenty twenty seven.
Yeah.
And the safer grant pieces that we will plan on reapplying for that grant opportunity when it opens again for the next cycle, so.
We would do the short term fixes in each station, but each six, unless we are able to do with station. So twenty four, maybe beginning in twenty three, we would start the short term in Station four. Those firefighters would start and be housed on the Station four. Twenty five, we would make similar improvements to one of the other stations, and those six would be stationed at that with those short term fixes. And then probably later, a short term fix at a third station as well for those until we decide on exactly what the long term options or the long term plan was for this.
But we're not, but the, one of the suggestions in combining is you lose Station four, so now you would put eighty six thousand dollars into converting something that you wouldn't necessarily be keeping. Uh you know, so some of these.
That's how I would, I mean.
Uh you know, it it just does, still doesn't make sense to me. It's it's um I just want to see us do this as responsibly as possible.
I agree, I'm just, we're looking at, you know, fifty to sixty million dollars of capital cost here. And if you're looking at eighty six thousand dollars per station is a lot, and I think we need to consider what the long term solutions.
Um the eighty six thousand dollars for a station that that we're going to sell. Do you see what I'm trying to say?
I do.
So that that's, that's why I, you know, um you say that's where the first group's going to go, but why would I want to put the money into the first group going there if that's not a station I'm going to keep?
I I would say, and I, part of it is, I don't think this has been part of the conversation. I still don't think we should close Station four. It doesn't make any sense, but we still have to figure out where we're going to locate our training and our shooting range. And in theory, you know, Station four could be that location. If we were to ban it as a fire station, we can still have it as an asset, so I wouldn't feel like it'd be a total lost cost. If we're going to invest money for the other training, they're like, you know what I'm saying? So.
But why do I need dorm rooms in a in a training facility?
Well, it can be written something, I mean, you know, then you have a shower and locker or something.
And if, I'm just saying, if you do that. And if, I'm just saying, if you do that, we need to know that pretty soon, because you're gonna be hiring an architect at your next meeting to start to work on the all-public works facility.
On that, that's why I I'm not comfortable, I mean, I, to me, every. City facility should be as co-located as possible. We're gonna be doing infrastructure somewhere, and we have the land in Station Four, we have tunneling in Station Four.
Not doing shooting range. I don't know if you want a shooting range here.
You don't want any of the schools, people will be going crazy.
There's there's not. The only useful land for Station Four is state, basically the front side of this building. Here, because we got the water, mineral water tanks that are right up here.
Okay, well, then this map is deceiving.
There's land, but it's not gonna be useful.
Well, this this shows.
Yeah, one of the options that I think you're going towards is possibly the, so. So they're talking about doing a lot of the training with possibly a new or renovated fire station. I think there's an opportunity to take some of those elements, have them incorporated into the. Public safety training facility, then that would reduce the overall cost of a future fire station.
That's possible.
At a new location, so I think there's a blend that can kind of happen there a little bit, but I don't know if this fire station for location is. A good piece for a public safety training facility.
I realize that you have another slide to go through for the the other costs, but. Not trying to get ahead of the game, but I really think I would, I really just wanna see what we come up with for a plan first and then talk about. How we make it work. Two. If we had buildings that could accommodate all-time firefighters, would that make the grant more palatable? To be accepted. We were in a position to be going for a grant without buildings that could hold the people.
Uh the grant doesn't really rate you on whether you have facilities to house them, it rates you on the need to have the firefighters there for a response side of things.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that's not a question that comes up like you have housing facilities, it's more of what are your goals, you know, your small volume. All of those things that play into that response side of things.
I was just trying to figure out if there was an advantage that we could go after to be able to be successful with.
Right, and.
Okay, I'll I'll continue on with the rest of the cost estimates. Uh so for each of the options, uh whether it be a remodel or new, we get a separate cost assessment for that. Under Station One, uh option one was the additional remodel approach, um and again, we have hard costs. Phasing factors, soft costs, uh and contingency with a total of fifteen point eight million for there for that option. Uh the all-new option at Station One, option two, uh brings us to a total uh construction cost of. Uh twenty-one point almost nine million. A noticeable difference between those two. Um Station Two, there was just the one option, which was the all-new, um and that was a hard cost of of fourteen point three. With phasing factors, soft costs, and contingency, a a total of nineteen point two million, uh but that's that's taken there.
Is there a cost they do on closing station like? How much is the cost to operate, so if you. Hundred thousand dollars a year in electricity, I mean, what are what are we talking about, closing, not using?
Well, obviously, if you're utilities, I would have to look at the budget as far as those line items for that, but yes, there is that cost, it's also, you're gonna reduce staffing, the equipment. You know, the gear, your fire apparatus.
Buying, you're not, you're not having the same.
Same thing, we're gonna reduce down in in our fleet size. Uh and all of those things that go along with having that station. Breaking two stations together.
And of course, maintenance long-term as well, maintaining one building rather than two. Um, excuse me, Station Three, uh the option one, again, additional remodel. Um hard cost of twelve million, uh with all the factors and soft costs, we get a total of sixteen million for that. Um Station Three, option two, um which is the all-new, uh thirteen point eight million. Um they, you know, we're talking about why, part of why they're different, to see here, one of almost half a million dollars in phasing factor. Uh that uh was saved uh between the two, uh and then you get down to a total of seventeen point seven seven million. Uh for that option, but yes, a lot closer. Um and Station Four is hard cost of uh around eleven million. Uh with all the other elements, gets down to fifteen million total cost. Um and then the combined station, uh we show a hard cost of nineteen point nine, so basically twenty million. Uh additional soft cost, no phasing factor, uh contingency, and a total construction cost of twenty-five uh million. Uh for that approach, all these are are, excuse me, all these are current costs. And so that's uh and uh something to consider as well, so.
So just to clarify, the twenty-five thousand on the combined Station One does not include la- land.
That one does not include land, that is correct, so when we were looking at the uh Station Three, where we're adding, that was factored in. Because land was defined and we could give a a value to that, um on the other, we we did not.
Right, no, I I get it, I just wanna keep that in mind that.
It's real.
That is the one that there's more cost to it yet.
Yeah. Um and then just kind of our our separate uh of what we see and what's recommend. Um short-term fixes, uh we're starting with model uh Station Four, which would be pretty much um uh. Right away, so that it'd be ready for an April uh staffing update, uh then next year it would be Station One. Uh though that would serve uh the city's needs best with the positioning of those full-time staff at those locations, uh but uh. What we view from the department. Then our next recommendation would be the combined Station Two and Four, the single uh combined approach. Um and again, uh we've covered some of those, but some of the reasons why uh we're recommending that for uh uh being a. A more economical and efficient approach, uh of course, it it reduces overall construction costs. Um from uh with a, from thirty-four billion of the two combined, you down to twenty-five million plus land. But definitely a a cost savings with that approach, uh long-term maintenance. Uh the apparatus and equipment would be reduced because you're only uh outfitting uh uh three stations rather than four. Uh long-term staffing would be reduced, um and then also by having the new that allows other spots for uh. Overflow during other construction processes, so.
And what about a combination of one and three instead, um putting it out, but let's say seventy?
Your three covers kind of our northwest side of the city.
Right.
One is the southeast side, and then Eureka Township.
Right, but. Get there just as fast, either way, you've got the freeway, you've got the.
When I look at response times today, Station Three is faster just because their access on the on the thirty-five than Station One is. Or even Station Four, that makes sense, sort of move to think about moving one further west right now. And that was in the study, it said move it west, but they never defined where. Um but if we start moving too far, because our population or our growth really is along the Cedar corridor, so now we're gonna take a station and move it further away from them. Especially on the south end of the city. If we move it out by seventy, and then if we're still gonna staff, which is our goal, is to still have the pay-on call or. Our the firefighters is now we gotta look at where is that station in relation to to where they live. That's the other pieces that we look at firefighters responding in the station, if we put fire station closer to seventy, there's less housing out there. Uh because we used to own land out by uh the water tower on Kensington. And the the housing development at that time didn't, wouldn't support a station as far as having firefighters respond. We still own the land.
Okay.
Well, I I guess that's what I was thinking, is that we have land out there, you've got a freeway access to get faster. You've got seventy that's been all redone, um you know, I mean, I. I'm thinking you can get to Eureka pretty fast, and um so, I don't know, it was just a thought. And the the other, the the reason being, I I just, the location of. Free, even though you're gonna have it come in off of, let's say, you go for a total. Deal and switch the building and make it so that it's coming in off of Hundred Seventy-Fifth, I I just the location of it, et cetera. To me is not a very feasible location, of all the ones that I thought that this, before I got in the study, I thought that would be the one that would get. Shut down that two and, you know, or three, so, but mostly three, so.
So it might help, and we could bring it back up, but, you know, we did the heat maps on all the responses and all this, and so. We've done the station location study, basically, and this is falling in line with what.
Yeah, I probably should have pulled that study up.
Our highest is Station Two and One and Two's area. Cedar Cor- our highest call volumes is Station One along Cedar, and then Station Two going towards Branch and Farms.
I just thinking about the phasing, so, I mean, I look at this list, your short-term fix, we remodel Station Four, then Station One. Uh you talked about, you know, we talked about the need for the environmental safety, the mental health, all that. My guess is that doing those remodels really isn't changing much from where we're at, it's just gonna add some sleeping quarters. So it's it's definitely a short-term fix, then you do stations, combine two stations, whatever they are. There you get your state-of-the-art facility that covers all of these things. My question is, is is look at the other two stations, um and you talked about concessions. What kind of concessions, I mean, would we do an addition and a remodel and spend, you know. Lot, a lot, a lot of money, and then just be not be getting what we need? I guess that's my question, what kind of concessions are there in doing the remodel versus station?
A lot of the concessions uh just come down to when we went through and and programmed for, you know, just not look at the the stations themselves. But look at what spaces they need as a department to function, and what's the ideal square footage for it. Um but then we take that square footage and we either plug it into a new layout, which we get our right perfect layout. Um in the existing, u- utilizing the existing buildings and some of the site restrictions, we do our best to get those ideal sizes. And we often can't, just with the layout and how we're we're situated on site, so some of the spaces are smaller than we'd like to see for the perfect scenario. Doesn't mean that it won't work, and that's what we talked about in some of them, that some of those concessions are okay. And they're just not that perfect ideal, um but it would meet the needs of the department, and so they were okay with. Um some of the instances where we had more minor concessions.
But I just don't wanna be in a position where we get done with this and go, man. I wish we would have done this.
Yeah.
This is too small.
Yeah, and and as we talked about it, some of that is, they're also trying to be fiscally responsible, so in those meetings, we weighed. When we had a new option and an addition to remodel, you know, what, trying to be fiscally responsible, so could they, were they okay making some concessions? Knowing that the cost would be lower, uh versus just coming and saying we need all brand-new stations for each facility, so.
And and you may find that the calculus from council perspective uh could be different, especially when the difference is less like it is on. Three, uh that is on one, uh so I certainly uh still an option out there, um if that's that's right.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's kind of what I was looking at, is, you know, gee, for a million more, you get a. New station or whatever, but I I just. Be be fiscally responsible, we need to do what we can afford, but there's a difference between, well. We could use this, but this is all usable versus getting something built, and now all of a sudden looking and going. Yeah, this isn't as usable as I as I thought, that's that's my big thing. Is, because yeah, definitely we wanna be fiscally responsible, it'd be great if we could put up four new fire stations that are brand-new. Uh that's not gonna happen, um so we gotta figure that out, but I just wanna make sure that we aren't giving up too much.
In none of the cases did we feel that primary goals were not that.
Okay.
Or we wouldn't have uh recommended it at all, no.
So like, when we talk about our combined station trying to use the central maintenance facility, that would be significant concessions that we. You wouldn't even meet your primary goals, so that's why we said, like, that just won't work for that size of station.
If you wanna add on to Station Three, is there a better location than immediately adjacent to it for? Is there other land within that footprint to buy instead?
We didn't analyze anything, I don't know.
Yeah, we did not look at that as far as a different location for three.
Yeah, I can say, existing location is not going to the west.
Yeah, and and.
Oh, to use existing.
Well, no, I mean, well, no, I'm thinking, okay, let's say we still want a station in this old neighborhood.
Yep.
Is there a better parcel in this neighborhood that?
And we we did not research that piece of it.
A question about what's, so we we obviously want to prioritize decontamination, decontamination zones. Uh dorms and space for equipment, but I'm seeing a lot of square footers used for public-facing facilities, parking lots. Um and places to date aren't really meant for public access, except for when there's open houses, the whole facility is open. I, to me, there's an option here where maybe the these smaller parcels are not really used at all for public. Use, and we can then maximize our our square footage for for the other priorities.
Yeah, so for most of the stations, the public use is very minimal, we, they always do have a. Certain amount of people that come for blood pressure checks, um or just people see a fire station and think that's where they go if they need help. Um and so some of it, it's just, it's more so an entry vestibule and maybe a conference room, uh that they can take somebody in and um. Either do a blood pressure check or check what their needs are, but that conference room can also be used for just states and office, conference rooms. Uh the largest one is either the combined station or um Station One. Uh because they have a large classroom in in E O C that could also be used, so when they, you, because that's where you do your um. Uh pancake, waffle, waffle breakfast, so they do have times where the public is coming, right now they have to do that in the apparatus space. Because they just don't have the space for it, so it's kind of, it's a combination.
And the parking lot is a huge amount of square footage, so if there was no intent for public use, that's a lot of space.
When you look at this one, you've probably got ten stalls of of parking for public use, that could also be, um you know. She-stopping by other staff things too, but there will be some public just coming, whether you say, you know, whether we say. There's nothing here, they they come for for those emergencies, they come for. Just checking in for, like you say, health issues, um if we let them just come to the back of the building. Uh we don't have any spot to to safely uh have them come, so hey, whether we have ten stalls or five stalls or something, but. We would certainly recommend having some piece of parking that would that is separate.
Let me clarify one, one thing, are you talking more like where it says firefighter parking, all of that people, no, just really the public side?
Public side, I mean.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
The the option that's in my head that wasn't presented was keeping Stations One, Two, Three and using Four as our central training facility. Public-facing event space, um central command for our offices. And eliminating all of those items from the precinct stations to maximize for firefighter use. Uh because we're we're on small per footprint, so.
I I think what we're saying i- in the, I mean, other than the parking lot for them to come.
Mm-hmm.
Inside building, there is not extra spaces dedicated to the public other than that entry vestibule. And a conference room that's used by the staff as well, so except for at at four. Or one, to me, four, you know, in that location where we are expecting uh that support.
And we included it at the combined station because you're getting rid of um. Station Four, and that's where the admin would go, so that's where we talked about then moving that, so um and I think we talked about. It wouldn't necessarily eliminate the need for some of the public space at Station One, because that is where you currently are housing the waffle breakfast, and they'd like to continue. Because of its location, but we could look at whether or not if you went. Because of its location, but we could look at whether or not if you went to the combined station, if some of the public space could be reduced. At station one, so that again, you were just more, had more of the public space at one facility and not between you two at that point.
And as important as a waffle breakfast is, I don't want us to be much designing stations around it. So I mean, we can find a place that we have to.
Joshua, can you just say that one more time for me, what your initial thought was? Leaving one, two and three with just doing the dorm rooms and then four being the training facility, is that what you, what I heard?
Yeah, so I mean, some of the thoughts in my head were trying to keep away from, uh, land acquisition. And keeping our stations positioned in ways that are. Kinda generally where they should, cause I think based on the heat map from other studies, that's, I think generally those stations are where they should be. Um, but then, and I think this is just me, some just education to the public, but you know. Just kind of shutting access to those to the public, because we have our station four. In the center of the city as, and we could remodel that for the sake of combined training use for all the stations. But then taking that training space out of, and, but it sounds like the response is that there's not a ton of that already built in.
Sure, the public part is not built into the other stations, so it wouldn't be reducing the side, saving costs in those. And you see the park, I mean, that's, that's true, but others, once we look at the building itself, it's not, there is no, uh, things we can really cut out. Uh, we do size and savings, which, which you're getting.
Well, I'm not trying to reduce that, I'm trying to use that parking lot to expand things that we may have conceded on, um, in the design for those buildings.
I see what you're having. Thank you, that, that, didn't catch that.
Did we, on station board, we consider it all going to a treatment facility site to expand, is that our stain on the site itself?
Well, that has water tanks all under it.
Water tanks, okay.
And remember, we're thinking about expanding that plan too.
Do we have, is it just the one fire station that the ambulance will stage at if they need be?
Uh, currently their staffing plan is station two and three. Also, you know, the combined station, we're kinda, in our thoughts as far as, and I'll say all four sta-, all, any plan that we were looking at was. For the future, ten years down the road plus of that there potentially is an ambulance at every station. The, the combined station we looked at is if there's an opportunity for whoever has the contract for an ambulance to put them there. Uh, because they, I'll say they wanna move from Apple Valley, be more centrally located in that. Call it Dodd-Cedar corridor, so that they're between all three cities.
So, so the designs take that.
They, we took that into consideration, that potential there.
Yeah. That's another thing, like, we, cause I hear what you're saying, Joshua, about the public access, but probably if they know an ambulance is there, they're gonna come there. Somebody's not feeling well or whatever, see and stop, but that's not, I don't think that's what you're talking about. I think you're talking about more, hey, come here.
Classes.
Yeah, classes and stuff.
And we're not looking at that at all the stations.
Well, I think the immediate conversation is that we need to come around, um, dorm facilities for the six. I think obviously. And the rest of the time.
Oh, if you're still, I mean.
I'm not convinced on any of these. And this is like.
And we're not asking you to tonight.
Yeah, I mean, we're just trying to say response times and what happens when our eighth goes through, I mean, I just. And the problem with land, I mean, we have, we run into this problem with businesses, why come in, there's no. If we're combined site, where are we going?
Am I the only one that would just wanna hold off until we actually had a plan? And then decide to do dorm facilities for our six?
And I totally agree, I just think because we went to the conversation of that as part of the budget, that to me. There could be a lost, you know, we could be losing out eighty-six thousand by. If we end up in a facility that's closed, so I get that. I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, you know, we need to decide to move down higher than six firefighters and we have to have facilities. But yeah, I'm not convinced four, we should close four at all, so that's why I'm more willing to say that we should renovate it, cause I think closing four is bad.
I think you gotta look at the timeframe too, you, you know, that eighty-six thousand isn't going towards nothing, we're not losing all of that. Because even if you put that eighty-six thousand in that facility and say you move, say, move forward with the rest of this plan. You've got years of construction and design, you've got at least two years before you can build your first station, I'm thinking, so. You're gonna have those people on there for the next, you're gonna use that eighty-six thousand for the next two years at least at a minimum. Before the, the other stations are ready for occupation or we decide what we're doing in the future. So that's another.
Six of them in there, and then if you're saying two years now, we're gonna have twelve in there.
Not in there, not.
Or you're gonna remodel another one that we don't know for sure.
Well, and I, and I think that's another option, you can do the six now. Do the eighty-six if that's what the cost is to renovate that, that gets us going, now do we hire the next six in twenty-four or twenty-five? Maybe we don't, maybe Kelsey decides, well, we're gonna move forward with one of these ideas or an idea that hasn't. But at least get the first six on board and get the full time staff going, and then from there we can. Decide better, once we have the facilities kind of figured out better, when do we hire the next six? Maybe we can try to avoid future renovations of other stations.
Well, then I feel bad for the initial six, cause we have no backup for them, do you know what I mean, it's like, I don't, I, I just.
This is never gonna be a transition. There is no clean way to do this. Short of building a brand new station for all of them that sits unused. You know, for a period of time until we hire up all those. That's an option. But if you wanted, every department that's made this transition, it has been money, it is not easy. And every department that I've talked to starts with a temporary solution. Because you work out the kinks, you figure out what you need and then you do your long term.
So I, and I don't mind, you know, phasing in six, six and six, I, I just would rather do it when we had a better plan, but. You guys will move forward, cause I'm the only one on that plate.
So what's your definition of a better plan, what, what?
Until we decide completely, do we go with their recommendation, do we ask them to explore a different recommendation? I, I would say it's probably a, a year delay in hiring the first six. Because we want to come up with, where do three or four stations, are they ultimately in the right spot? Do we really need to move them, what are our land options? All the things that are laid out here that we can't come to a decision on, right, today, we're saying we're gonna put off. Which is fine to put it off, because I want us to be able to thoroughly vet what we're gonna do. But I don't want us just jumping into the first six, and we don't necessarily know what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I totally, I understand where you're coming from, my concern is, you know, if we. We delay and then we figure out what the solution is, it's still construction costs. But it's, it's not a year delay, it could be a two or three year delay, because if you. Let's just say you combine two together and that's where we're gonna put it, but at the same time, then we haven't done any temporary.
You're gonna have temporary, that's temporary cost, no matter.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying.
The other thing here too, just now we have to kinda talk about the staffing piece, I don't know if there are other options besides. Uh, twenty-four hour shifts for our initial six. But we have immediate needs to fill hours that are not being filled. Um, and duty crews that are not being filled, because we have an immediate need, and so to me. The staffing of six has to happen, and whether that's sleeping quarters or. Some other arrangement that doesn't require sleeping quarters, that can be a conversation. But there is, we do need to fix something now to help this hybrid start happening, because we, we don't have enough bodies. To fill all of the shifts as we speak, as we stand right now.
Yeah, so I guess to your point, is there a staffing model that doesn't require sleeping quarters?
Everything we've looked at is for twenty-four seven, so it's for having minimum of three on, so that's. With the six, it's two full time on per shift and then one pay on call, that would be overnight. So kind of the, the things that happen with that now is right now when we look back at a.
Do you have a duty crew person, in theory, with two full time?
Correct.
Yep.
And then we run our current duty crew trucker, that's our plan, is to run our current duty crew model that we run today. As far as those day hours, if you will, from nine AM till ten PM. Uh, from the study, our goal is to have two truck staff. Uh, one twenty-four seven at the start, and that's kind of what we've been, our, our angle or our goal has been for this whole time. With that overnight truck now, we, we eliminate, uh, when we look back at a month of September. We had sixty overnight calls, we would eliminate all but three of those calls that we would page a station. That that one truck would cover that, so now taking some of the stress off of our current personnel. Of them getting up two, three times in the night and still working their full time job, we have that one truck covering that.
So yeah, let's say there's a big fire.
Yep.
Then that's likely gonna have to full time first and then we're gonna have to pay that call.
Correct, we're gonna have that initial truck out the door much faster than we are at the page station. But those sixty overnight calls, probably most are medical, right?
Correct.
And when you said that all the three meant you didn't have to, um, page somebody out. That meant you didn't have duplicate calls that gone on at the same time, right? The three calls were either, it was a two station call or that duty crew was already occupied, so it was. So fifty-seven of the calls in September overnight were handled by one truck, could have been handled by one truck. And that was the only call that was going on at that time, that would be handled by the twenty-four hour.
And under the staffing model, how many living spaces or dormitories, just two?
No, we were going with three, we were gonna add a fourth one, just so that was there and we had it for use. You know, the other piece that, uh, that, and I'll say from my time on the department, that we've staffed overnight shifts for. Uh, all the riding that happened, so we did that over that weekend, but we've also staffed and, staffed for storm events. So we kept crews that were able to come in and they're sleeping on couches or cots that we bought, so this helps. Get us to that point in a short term fix, and we're only doing that one station for, you know, potentially four, four spots to sleep. And I, I understand the cost, but everything that we're putting in, two of the spaces that we're taking from station four are current offices. So all's we're putting in is the soft goods, the beds and that such. And then two of the other spaces are be, are, we're taking over training rooms, so we're putting in walls, uh, to make those into a bedcom.
So in, just looking, I mean, worst case scenario. We're gonna hire the six, 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 the worst case scenario. Is we end up doing a short term rental on all the stations to create some dorm spaces for our hybrid fire department that we have now. And we don't do any of the new ones, that's like three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, to do the first two, it's a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. In my mind, I'm just trying to find a scenario where I don't feel pressure, cause I think I, I hear that, like, what Michelle said to that, where we just don't. Feel like there's a ton of pressure that, okay, we've done these two. Oh shoot, this is really isn't a good time to build a new combined fire station, can we, can we? Have that hybrid fire department for a few years, I mean, you were talking up to twenty-seven. With this three hundred and eighteen thousand dollar investment, it won't be ideal, you still have the health and the issues going. But you could still do that and still have a fire department, it just wouldn't be in the, the facilities that we would like them to be in.
Correct, and I think. We understand that there's gonna be a transition time, so that's kind of why we were focusing on the minimal short terms of what can we do to just. You know, all we focus on truly is the sleeping quarters, as far as so that they're there. Um, you know, the fitness room, we already have in existence, that's what's today at station four. So we didn't focus on that, it was all just, where can we put them so that they'd have a place to, to sleep? But we know we're taking away our training rooms or potentially that they're gonna have to live through that timeframe. And we know it's two to three years, potentially four years that we're in this window.
Cause the, uh, you know, the, the carcinogens, the gear, and that is not ideal, I saw that. I go, I, I don't like this, but it's the way it is now. You know, and, and we want to move forward from, away from that, but if we do nothing, we're gonna be in the same situation. If we build dormitory spaces in these fire stations, we're in the same situation, but we're working towards. A, 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 a model where we have a hybrid, uh, and we can start thinking about later on. But I, I just, for me, I have no issue in with the, uh, the remodeling. Because of that, I, I, I just, we aren't, if we don't do that and we don't hire people that, we're not gonna be any different than we are now in terms of facilities. Not ideal, I really wanna emphasize that, you know, we want the best for our firefighters and we want them in a safe environment. That they can experience their mental health and be safe of, of all the things they're dragging in from fires, um, but we can't do that overnight.
Well, cause the one thing we haven't talked about is how we're supposed to pay for all this. You know, and which was not gonna happen yet tonight, you know, it didn't, but. This is gonna take a lot of planning to figure out, how are we supposed to pay for this?
Yeah, I mean, on top of water treatment.
Yeah.
Public works.
Yeah.
If you, you take just those three projects, it's a hundred million dollars.
Right.
Yeah. Between public works, water treatment, everything.
That's kind of the elephant in the room, we almost, we wanted to call, but it's like, how in the heck do you do this?
Okay, so I think there's consensus on the renovation, keep moving forward and then rest of this is gonna go into more conversation.
And it'll be by its own pieces, obviously, right, I mean, we're only gonna renovate station one, short term, right away, um.
But, okay.
Station four.
First station, station.
Yeah, one more, one more question for the Eric picks, is there any possibility, like, if you're talking about taking a station. And not moving it, not, but just doing the add-ons, is there ways to do that, I know it costs more the longer it takes, the cheapest time to build is right now. But is there a way to do, if we prioritized what we wanted to see for firefighters, is there a way to do that incrementally in the, in a building?
In the same building?
Yeah, let's, let's say you're gonna take, uh, fire station one and do that add-on, is that all, I, I mean. I suppose it does all have to be done at once or?
The implications of, uh, yeah, it's, yeah, to do it incrementally is probably not feasible and, and accomplish, cause you have, you're generally taking away something. In the model part to do the next part of it, and so yeah, it would be nice to build it, but again, the smaller pieces, but I don't see that.
Will there be any adaptations to this report as a result of this conversation, um, and just different comments that were made? Whether that be about Frontier's little building there or?
What we'll probably do is, um, we'll reconvene after this and we'll bring this back to you, uh. Don't wanna give you a timeframe yet, but probably after, after the first of the year, with maybe a little bit more of a recommendation, um. Maybe some timing and a financing plan for options, how we might do that. But I'm, I'm sure we'll look at them and take back some of the conversation that we had, see what might be about you, I mean, these are blocks on a page right now.
Right.
It's Lego, so. So.
Will you remind me what, when we did the hotspot thing, so I can look that back up again, what month we did that in?
Would have been, you were to receive this City Gate report over in April of twenty. We can dig it out and send it to you.
I'll resend it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, I just, now, having been part of this discussion as it's evolved. Two, I have to say, I was really struck when we toured those stations about, I would, I, you know, I knew we were gonna see. Needs for some improvement, I didn't anticipate how woefully out of date. Everything was in terms of the health and safety things, and that's really what stood out to me. So, Michelle, your point, I mean, I, I, being new to this process too, I've kind of wondered. The, the overall plan too, cause it seems like we're adding staff and then we're just kinda doing piecemeal, I understand you guys have been doing it longer. Than I have, but I do see a critical need there, um, with that, and then also contrasted with Burnsville. Which has kind of the Cadillac model there and realizing we're gonna be competing with them for firefighters. So the wellness piece is more than just an OSHA issue, it's, it's a, getting the best and brightest issue as well too, so I hope we take that into consideration. I don't have any answers for the bigger questions yet.
I would, I'd be also curious to find out savings on clothing. The different ones, what that cost is, and then also, um, working with our commercial real estate on which are marketable, which is the marketability of, of the parcels. Fortunately, we can't build a fire station next to the liquor store, cause it's too small. And then, and knowing the other land that we own. And then, and knowing the other land that we own will be helpful too. I know we have parts, but I just don't, I don't know at all. Other questions?
Oh, it's a thorough study, so I'll check.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No, I do.
More conversation. Uh, we're only forty minutes behind schedule. Okay. Uh, Paul, can we turn over to you to talk about PFOS?
There's Lexus, we're gonna do the firefighting foam.
One piece, one piece of. Out of ours. Right in that big well.
Right, so, oh, thank you, Mayor City Council member, so that we're talking tonight about, um, some national, uh, uh, litigation that's going on right now against PFOS manufacturers. Um, so I just wanted to bring this to your attention. So tonight I'd like to just briefly talk about, uh, what PFOS is, why it's concerning, you know, drinking water, and discuss current, uh, class action litigations going on right now. Timing of that, and then view cities' options for what we want to do with that litigation, and talk about some best next steps as well. So, uh, real quick, uh, what is PFOS? So, uh, it's a family of chemicals, um, it's over five thousand chemicals. Um, it's been manufactured, um, basically starting nineteen thirty-eight was designed, it was invented by DuPont. Um, and for the next fifty-plus years, it's been utilized in all sorts of manufacturing and products. Both, both commercial and domestic. Um, most common, uh, chemical groups is a pre-floral octane acid, the PFOA. A, PFOA, ways, and then a P, uh, the pre-flor- or octane, uh, sulfatic acids, PFOAs. Those are the two that are the most concerning, that are, uh, heading up in our drinking water. So what's the issue with, with this, these chemicals? So they're actually, they're, uh, they can be called, uh, forever chemicals, because they do not break down in naturally in the environment. Basically, you have to incinerate this stuff, uh, at really high, uh, temperatures to, to break down the chemical. Uh, it's a long, uh, chemical ch- chain that, uh, can actually get, uh, bioaccumulated in humans and other living organisms, so there's some health risks associated with, with these chemicals if it accumulates in, in, uh, bodies. Uh, so, again, PFOS, um, what's, what's unique about the, the, the chemical is that it's really resistant to water and, uh, and, and oils too, so it, uh, retells oils, water very well, so. Over the years, uh, Scotchgard was designed with this, uh, manufacturer, this, uh, carpets, I'm thinking furniture, um, waterproofing clothing, uh, especially firefighting foams, we're finding that that's one of the biggest issues with, uh, that are eating in our water. Uh, nonstick cookware, I'm gonna put even, even, even dumplac over the years, and then used, uh, PFOS in it as well, um, but the PFOAS and the PFOA, uh, chemicals are no longer, um, manufactured in the United States. Um, and a lot of the other chemicals are, are being discontinued as well, but unfortunately, there's still these chemicals are in the, in the product chains and still being utilized in circulation, and they are still being manufactured overseas as well. So we're still seeing some of these, uh, products in, in use and getting into the environment. So, um, like I said, PFOS does not break down, um, and it's been used, you know, fifty, sixty years already. Um, and we're finding it everywhere now. Um, the more we test, the more we find PFOS, so we're finding it in, in surface water bodies, finding groundwater, finding in soils, and even in the air, there, uh, the Department of Health actually tested rain droplets, and they're finding PFOS in rain right now. So it's, it's everywhere. So, again, uh, the EPA is concerned about the, the health effects of, of these chemicals. So they have proposed, uh, national regulations, uh, and for the PFOA and PFOS chemicals specifically. So they're recommending, um, a maximum contaminant level of these chemicals, or these chemicals that found in, in drinking water, to be no more than, uh, four parts per trillion. Uh, which is really unheard of in the industry. Uh, we don't typically test down to that level of contaminants for any other chemicals in our, in our, in our drinking water. And under the Safe Water Drinking Act, public water systems are required to, uh, meet these, uh, MCLs now. Uh, for, for the, for the new contaminants, and we're expecting EPA to hand out the, uh, MCLs either later this year or early next year. And we're, I'll have to abide by those, those rules, and it goes through the PCA in all the states. So the, um, litigation, um, we wanted to talk about tonight is specifically just for manufacturers of, of DuPont, and three of those are the two biggest manufacturers, the PFOA and PFOAs. And, um, over the, over the last, I'd say, four or five years, um, as more testing has been done nationally. We're finding that again, more of those PFO, the PFOS is in our water system, and there's been a lot of litigation, um, nationally. Uh, where they're finding, uh, large amounts of this in, in, in water bodies, so there's been a lot of, there's hundreds of litigation. Court cases that have been started over the years. And now, the, uh, all these lawsuits have been rolled into this multi-district litigation. Uh, and going after DuPont and 3M specifically, and DuPont and 3M have basically settled on, um, on the, on these litigation, on these settlements right now, so DuPont, uh, is right now settled for over one point one billion dollars, and then 3M is, uh, upwards of almost, uh, well, it's gonna be right around twelve billion dollars, I think, right now, so. So you take that, minus all the attorneys' fees and other court case costs, and, and that will be the settlement eventually. So we don't know exactly how much money to be actually handed out to, um, agencies or water, uh, water, um, utilities, but, uh, it's gonna be a big amount. Uh, and again, this does not apply to other PFOS manufacturers, specifically for 3M and DuPont.
Also, so sorry, it's just a national fee, so it's not just Minnesota.
It's just not Minnesota, yeah, correct. It's, it's spread all through all fifty states. So, it's a, so basically, I do one real last point on that page, so virtually, uh, any water body, uh, water body systems that, that have, that detected PFOS in the water, um, would be eligible for, for that settlement dollars. So, and Lakeville has tested positive for a, a really small trace of PFOS, uh, so we're, we're eligible for, uh, becoming, uh, part of that, that class action lawsuit. So what we'd like to discuss tonight would is, uh, does a city want to opt out of the, uh, the, of the settlement litigation, or do we object to what the, the court's, uh, filings and that the settlement is? Or remain member of the class? So, um, basically, like I said, all eligible water systems will, um, systems will be eligible for automatically included in the wa, in the settlement unless they opt out. So you actually have to fill out some paperwork if, if you want to be, uh, opt out. Uh, so the settlements are, are binding unless the water system, uh, again, opts out, the water systems do not. But do not opt out will waive their rights to pursue future litigations for 3M and DuPont in the future, uh, for PFOS contamination. So there is some risk if, for example, if we opt in, or, um, I mean, in the, in the lawsuit, and we have a balloon of, of PFOS that hits our waters, our, our groundwater, that we don't have any, basically, the, uh, legal recourse to go back after PFOS. Uh, DuPont or 3M, so, so that's, that's the only risk that we receive by opting out, really. Uh, so, and, and again, opting out, um, you have to fill out some paperwork um, before December fourth for the DuPont, uh, court case, and, uh, 3M for December eleventh. So, next slide, so the city were, uh, elects to remain as, as part of the settlement. And become, we'd recommend that we retain legal counsel, uh, to walk us through that process, to help us through the process. Um, benefits again for, for that counsel would be to access, uh, advice and guidance to do the process, help to, uh, estimate the recovery amounts of the settlement amounts that we potentially would receive, and help to keep track of the court deadlines. And there are gonna be a lot of court deadlines coming up next year in twenty twenty-four for this. Although we have to meet, and there's some testing associated with it as well, and then assisting in filing the actual forms as well too, so. And we think, you know, all the legal fees, um, that we would, or incur based upon the, this, uh, settlement, um, that could be recouped through the, the settlement laws that we received in 3M and, uh, DuPont.
So that's why you said the financial impact was zero?
Yes, that's why we think that it's, it's not gonna be much. I mean, we, we, like I said, we have just very little hits, uh, less than a part per trillion. We have two of our wells for the PFOSs that are in this litigation. Uh, so we're not, I mean, it's gonna maybe twenty thousand dollars for, we're talking about, but the, again, the, the risk is if we, if we, uh, go with the, go with the, uh, the settlement, we don't have any recourse down the road to go after 3M if we have any, uh, issues with our, with, uh, additional PFOSs. It's, uh, for, you know, for improving our system, or for, uh, for, for settlement down.
Those would also be all at our cost.
Exactly.
They're in the city, maybe there's five, ten-year litigation. Right, it's been since a lot of them's been gone to.
So the good news is we don't have very much PFOS in the water, but again, this is just a snapshot in time. We took tests back in two thousand and one with, you know, very little, uh, PFOS, uh, identified in our water system, but again, that's.
Doesn't watch, doesn't twenty.
I'm two thousand twenty.
Okay.
That's twenty.
So my, my question is, I mean, there was no manufacturing anywhere here. So it's more of a consumable product, something like long-term, chances of having the, like, situation of a lot of PFOS, and wanting to go after seems pretty minimal. Just sticking in this is probably is from a larger risk, right? I mean, that's what we recommend.
That, and that's what we're recommending too. The only risk that I see that's out there is, you know, we haven't tested near the airport, um, that council airport down there, I mean, we don't even know if they ever used any, uh, PFOS foam, um, and so that's, I could, that, I can see that's the only risk, the risk that we really have out there. That we don't know about, but any data, we don't have any data, so.
Yeah, I just don't see it's like a Lake Elmer, whatever, so the east side.
Yeah, there, these things would vary kind of through that, that whole area.
I'm fine with the recommendation.
Okay, so if you're fine with the recommendation, before we'll talk to, we've been talking to, uh, several, uh, legal firms about.
Is this, is this so specific, we can't use Campbell?
Yeah, they're even recommending that we use a different one, right? We have one that I think Apple Valley even are gonna use.
But it's not the guy that came to our meeting.
No.
It's not that Apple Valley attorney?
No.
Okay, then that's fine, okay.
So we'll, we'll bring us back a contract in the future.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you.
All right, Julie.
Seeing as I was supposed to start the last item, but eight fifteen, I'm not gonna be able to catch up all of it.
That's okay.
So, um, I love, there's a lot of detail in the, uh, the packet on what you got, so I'm just gonna touch very briefly on this. Uh, so we've got the liquor fund up first, right? Liquor funds are doing really well. And they're coming in above what they budgeted for twenty twenty-three. And we're, uh, the way we structured, structured sales, um, is based on these very healthy, this very healthy year, Kia Cook really came in first, as far as those go, so, um, the personnel expenses reflecting the additional, adding more full-time staff with benefits versus, um, trying to keep those part-time positions filled, so. Um, we are still looking at transferring out one point five eight million in twenty twenty-four. That's what's in the budget, those items were included in the packet in that chart there, um. Any questions on, we're, we're hitting the forecast, or the, you know, the fund balance reserves and all that that we set out for ourselves. We're achieving those cash targets, we're achieving the debt service coverage ratio, um, so there's any questions in the liquor funds?
Uh, just, this is my one thing that I asked always, is that the target dates for paying off the police bonds, do you conclude the memo in the future? It's my little pet peeve, because I think every day I have all these different projects, we can spend four hundred thousand dollars. It's in the packet.
Okay.
Oh, wasn't the packet, yeah, I missed it. It's not necessarily written in this one, but it's in the packet today. It was in the, the ten-year.
Ten-year, okay.
Oh, it was in the ten-year broke on. Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's right, it is.
It is thirty-two. Well, oh, I know, I, I, well, because I asked you on so many times that I finally.
I'll put it.
Were you, were you asking?
But the Galaxy Bonds were twenty. Yeah, those are sooner.
Those are pretty soon, yeah.
Was your question about moving on to the, your next item?
No.
Oh, okay, so I was gonna say, we have the finance committee, uh, present too, because there are notes from the October eleventh meeting about the, uh, proposed budget, and so I just wanted to at least have some time to reflect on those notes. After, I didn't mean to interrupt you though.
No, not at all.
I just didn't want to move on before we got.
And that's fine, and that's what we're, you know, so, look, when we're looking at the, um, cash on hand, focuses on the balance sheet. Um, whereas the debt, when you're looking at the debt service coverage, that factor is looking at profit loss statement. So, and so we're looking at performance of the liquor operations, you know, in two different ways. That's why, um, making sure that we're covering it in, with both viewpoints. Um, so those are, have been factored into it, uh. So as far as, as we, that's been built into the reports that we track into.
Those notes from.
Yes. Are they gonna make more money because they gotta pay for fire stations?
Yes, that's very true. Well, that, that should, looking further down the line in terms of the pro forma, we've got balances or income after bond principal payments in the amounts of nearly a million dollars. And it seems like a lot, uh, this, are we not anticipating, uh, higher transfers as a part of?
We can, um, that's just not how this, this has been stretched out. So what years are you looking at?
Uh, twenty thirty-one, well, actually, twenty thirty-two really jumps.
Yes.
Those three years.
And that's where, I mean, we'll definitely have that flexibility, and we can start transferring out more too. I mean, there's no reason to carry that much unless we have some major capital outlays. Plan for the buildings.
It's just a.
That's.
Dan and I haven't talked to Justin much about this yet, but we, we do need to take a look at the market area for the, uh, Heritage Liquor Store. We're way over, um, we're way over, uh, our sales there, uh, per square footage, so we're doing, we could be, be doing more business there if we could expand Heritage Liquor Store location. But we're gonna put in next year for, uh, a market study, to see what we need to do for the Heritage Liquor Store. So that's kind of just a heads up that I don't know what that means, it may mean we're just gonna stay where we're at. This one.
Is the cup thing off the table?
That is certain. Just as for, um, for Grin's.
Oh, I want Grin's.
Yeah, so, I mean, you see, one point five million is what we're transferring out of the fund. Just real high-level math, fifty-seven million dollars of debt, which is remodeling Station One, remodeling Station Three, combined two and four, in today's dollars, that's fifty-seven million. Roughly at twenty years at four percent, is annually about two million a year. So, one point five million from liquor almost covers that total package. Now, that means you're also having to then levy for the things that, you know, there's equipments, I mean, it's all fungible, right? Just as you're thinking scale.
We just need a meta data center.
Sold.
And these, and these numbers are mostly liquor sales, um, right? I mean, we're not.
There's some rental in there.
Yeah, it's not much.
Not CB, uh, whatever the, uh.
That's, well, those beverages are in there.
Those, like, current sales of that, but what are we projecting sales of that in the future?
Go higher.
Yeah.
No pun intended.
But yeah, they'll go higher.
Ken hasn't done projections on it, but our sales are constantly growing every month on that. You know, it's kind of the shiny penny effect there too, we think, so it could eventually go out.
Yeah.
Oh, that is competition.
Yeah, yeah.
Always, it was interesting, just looking at some of the numbers, it was like quarry room rentals went way up. And the liquor sales went up, so I mean, I'm assuming that's what drove the increase in liquor sales, it's a lot of the events there.
It helps.
It helped. I mean, Hannah does a great job of isolating, you know, sales from events. There's always a correlation.
Yeah.
The important was definitely increased sales overall. I would fifteen to around fifteen percent every time there's an event there. You're from your here.
Need weekly events.
Four events.
I'm sorry then, um, has there been any more conversation about this?
Uh, we have got some inquiries on it. Most of them have been auto uses, so auto parts store oil change places.
We've said no, if you tell us differently, we'll go back to them, but we don't think that's.
We've been holding out for something that's a little more complimentary. There is another use that's still in the wings, still being discussed, that would be ideal. Um, it would be a multi tenant retail building with some fast casual dining. Which would be perfect next to us, um, so that's still in the works. Um, so we're kind of waiting for that to either go away or to or to come to fruition.
Wait, gas?
And now their lake stream ones. Um, that's fine, I'm. Most people are gonna harvest the moon.
Yeah, the the auto, they just, it's, it just doesn't do anything for us next door. You know, it's, it's a level of retail, multi tenant retail.
It's a good piece of progress.
The the longer we hold it, the higher the value is with everything else developing out there. Anything wrong by holding on to it.
My question is about.
Each year we get audited, it's percentage of sales uh or profit comes up. Is there any way that this number can be inserted into the audits? I mean, I don't understand the difference between what they're counting and what we're counting and why our percentage says twenty seven point something percent.
Um, I have found that oftentimes the auditors put freight in a different places, even though you tell them not freight is. Part of the cost of goods sold.
Right.
It is, and it ends up down in the operating part versus in cost of goods sold. Depends on the auditor. You really have to watch it because if you don't point it out, it because the typically a city, how the way they code. How the groupings of things happen, freight is up in there with the city perspective, it's it's a cost of goods, but. Yeah.
Cuz the other thing in terms of comparables, that puts us below other cities' profits, but with these numbers, it would put us either in line or above.
Yeah, and I'm I'm not sure.
There's also no standard about how cities report that gross profit.
Right.
A lot of cities use their city, their public works to plow their parking lots.
Sure.
And so they don't have that cost, so there's no set. I mean, that's why, I mean, we're always twenty five percent or higher, maybe a little bit lower, but I just, they're never apples to apples.
Yeah, we we operate liquor operations to be an independent, fully retail establishment with all costs. No matter if it's public works that does it or contractors to do it, all of that costs are taken out of the bottom line to show the true. Overall operational costs of our liquor stores. And so, Justin said, other cities don't necessarily do that. Public works will do it or a partner might do some stuff or. And then that's not shown in their bottom line.
And another thing that you um have to be careful watching sometimes rental, say rental space to tenants. Murphy's or whatever, and they'll get that confused and have that in the revenues. So some of those other cities, the revenue, the sales can be overstated. Like, well, no, that's not, that's a non operating revenue.
Right, so.
They they they're, yeah, like Alan said, in a lot of times you're looking at these liquor comparable reports at the state level and there's so many variables.
Well, again, they can look profitable to their public. You you have to put some of those numbers in there to do that.
Sure.
Or take some of them out to do that, so. I mean, you know. By not including the snow. Which is substantial in their report because it's a city owned thing. Um, makes them more profitable, so.
Other questions in the liquor fund, we'll move to the utility fund budgets and utility rate projections. So um, we are looking at a three percent increase at the water rates and sewer rates and then having a zero percent increase for streetlights and environmental resources. Um, we are meeting the on aside and cash uh fund requirement for the water sewer fund. Um, of five hundred thousand and streetlights and environmental resources is at a hundred thousand. Uh, that's how these are structured right now. We are also, we did also structure the rate increases so that we, when it is time to replace the water treatment plant. Or.
Expand.
Expand. In twenty twenty seven, we're not gonna have to issue bonds. We're gonna have the cash on hand, most of it. Or if not all of it on hand between the water uh sewer utility fund and the water trunk fund.
Why there's such a spread between the blue lines?
On the charts.
Yeah.
Out years.
Yeah, because we know, even though it's beyond the desire, we know we want to.
What do those balance, where are those balances? They get held, uh, cuz I mean, eleven million dollars of cash balance, does that benefit us in any way? Are we getting interest off of this?
Yeah, it's in the mattress. No, it's in the in the investment pots. We don't, yeah, and we're.
Six of eight percent or something?
It ranges, yes, depending on the holdings that we've got. You know, there's, we try and have it in, obviously, it's in safe. Custodial and cuz save things that we aren't risking losing on it, but as you know, the market has been pretty bad for the last couple of years. And so now we're just starting to see those returns on the investment portfolios, so.
So we don't ever lose value on our.
So this is always frustration and no offense to accounts, but a lot of times you'll see, like in your loss and fair market value in the end. That was if we were to cash those in today.
Right.
All of our stuff, if we hold on to it for the term, will be profitable. Because it's always, it's almost gonna be CDs or bonds or things like.
Sure, cuz we would never cash them.
Not allowed, exactly. And we're not allowed, we're restricted by state law on what we can invest.
But because of us being municipalities, we have to mark to market. And so that's, and that's why, and it's nice actually having in your financials, you can see, here's the true interest you've earned or dividends. And here's that market value adjustment, so there's two separate lines um on these different funds. It's nice to see that because, you know, one of them is a book entry. We don't, we don't play the market, we. Buy and hold till it's maturity, so.
So we don't realize those gains until the end.
We're we're realizing them as the interest payments aged every, you know, some of them are every six months, you know, or some are monthly. Depending on the structure of the security. Um, so with this, um. We we do have the um on the water use sewer utility fund, we are adding the one utility maintenance position. In twenty twenty four, so that's built in here. Um, it was tricky with this restructuring, the projected sales because of moving to the four uh the new tier structure. And we don't have a full year of that history. Granted, it was another drought summer, so a lot of extra sales just because of the dry year. So um, we're feeling confident that the the numbers are. Not too robust and we're covering ourselves with the three percent, so um. Let's see, anything um?
I might add, um, just if you remember, this matches with the the study that we had, right? We had a couple of years and some pretty significant increases with the plan that starting in twenty four, it was gonna start to go back down to the three percent bump. So this matches with what.
Right.
Well, you mentioned somewhere down the line potentially a decrease, which seems rare, um, so that's exciting.
Yes, actually, and that's what we're looking at. So twenty twenty seven, after we um do the expansion of the water treatment plant. We could be able to hold state rate steady at that point or possibly decrease them. You know, so that's gonna be nice. Especially because of what the debt that's falling off.
Yeah.
And that's a big piece of it.
Sorry to just dig it, Paul, have they been finding success in this biologics testing that you've been doing?
Yep, we're finally seeing some real good progress in our. Our manganese, that was the biggest problem you've been seeing over the last couple of months here, so. We, yeah, we we we've tested it, it's gonna be working for the next, what, two, two, three, four weeks in a row. Uh, complete the study.
Okay.
And bring it back to you.
I said, does the data look favorable?
We we, our problem is actually our water is really clear.
Yeah.
So the bugs don't have anything to really eat.
Okay.
We're trying to add um more oxygen and different things in terms of filtration process, so we're just trying to dial in it right now. So it's a good problem, yeah, but I thi- I think it's gonna work.
Just kind of a related question, but there's increased fees for the Metropolitan Council on wastewater. Are there other ways to manage our? Outflow?
Yep, so. Uh, I mean, we 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 do our best, so the biggest issue now that to improve. Uh, our reduced amount of uh wastewater that uh ends up at that council is to try to eliminate as much of the surface water. And the groundwater that gets in our sewer pipes, that's why we have uh big mining products every year, the I N I program that we have. So we go around um and and do a bunch of inspections too every year and make sure that. Reduce as much of the surface water that gets in there as much as we can, um, and groundwater as well, so that's that's.
Things variable.
It is variable and dryer, dryer seasons right now too, I mean, we're not seeing as much water getting in the, in the uh. In our system as well too, and I think that's a little reflected in in that council's numbers that uh they they've given us as well too, so. But wet areas, I, the numbers are gonna come back up a little bit more, but I think it's behooves us to do our due diligence to try to. Keep lining our our pipes as much as we can, where we're finding I N I and try to eliminate as much of that groundwater, surface water getting in our systems.
True. And I know if there was a campaign to put toilet attachments to decrease the wastewater, I mean.
You know, so it kind of ties into our water smart system because for like toilets, you know, that's. That water, you know, obviously goes into the sewer system as well, when you when you catch it, with you, with our water smart system. You know, if people are monitoring it with the amount of water that they're using, it's a day to day basis. That's a, it's really a good tool to use for water, um, try to reduce the amount of water consumption as we get and. As much uh sewer that goes into sewer system.
Sure.
And and I'm thinking too, with the new tiered structure, it's more of a benefit to those people who are conservative. So there's more incentive to be in that conservative group. Uh, the uh streetlight fund, we are looking at no increase there, but and and we're able to cover. We're achieving the cash targets and achieving debt service coverage um for all the years as well. So that one is holding steady. The Environmental Resource Fund, um, we're also, like I said, just keeping rates flat for twenty twenty four. Um, we would look at two percent annual increases starting in twenty twenty five going out. Um, we are meeting the cash targets and there is no debt in that fund, so that doesn't apply. Um, any questions on either of those two? So with that, I'm. This council is good with us proposing those rate structures?
Yeah, I I mean, I I'm fine with the rate changes for for the year, I guess my only note. Said ideally those the smaller increases are for tier one, tier two, long term. And so if they ever kind of become out of whack with just doing three percent across the board. I maybe wanna consider, you know, having a smaller percentage increase for tier one, tier two versus tier three, four. But I think they look fine. I mean, we're talking about pennies of the increase in most cases, so.
And next we've got the proposed fee schedule for twenty twenty four. Uh, did know to any new fees that we haven't. Been charging um people for, and then also the just proposed changes, a lot of these have to do with. If it has staff time related to it, it's just incrementally changing to um match up for the cost of living adjustments that are anticipated. So um, we are adding in an online permit application fee. It's a three dollar per permit fee, but that will be starting to be charged when we implement the software in October of next year with B S and A. So um, but wanna make sure we get that on the schedule, anticipating that will go as it is planned in October. So um, we added a separate fee that's recovering what we paid to COVIDa County when we issues. Uh, when we put the special assessment roles to them, normally the city's been absorbing that. Uh, found that other cities, our neighbors were not absorbing it and passing it on, so that's what that is. Um, we had a separate park shelter fees for Antler's Park because of the shelter A being substantially bigger than B and C. So they added another uh pricing structure for that.
Do you have any sense about how many non residents? I mean, like, I wonder if we're gonna look at that, cuz I'm, I mean, only fifty dollars more.
Against John, I don't know.
I thought the same thing, actually, I was gonna suggest.
I'd rather increase the non resident, decrease the resident, if there's a, if there's an apex.
But I was also wanting to see a some full year data on, you know, is there an imbalance of non resident users?
After the first year.
Yeah.
Do you want us to look at that for this?
No, I, you know, we gotta see it open, I think, first, see.
We did add an annexation application fee because we're getting more of those requests and it hasn't been covering our staff time before, so. It's substantial, who's paying that?
Usually the landowner or the developer. But that's our cost, I mean, probably not even our our cost, we have pretty extensive returning time and staff time like those.
But the two thousands getting returned.
No.
Oh, is that?
No. That's put in escrow that we draw on.
Oh, okay.
Other things I've known, you mentioned the M C D S charge, that's for just a second.
Are we discouraging that from happening? If there's another way to get that money somehow through the development?
If they're worried about two thousand dollars, then I don't know if they're really serious about annexing. That's a pretty, I mean, we we charge for conditional use permits, we charge for compliance amendments. We don't subsidize any of those, I shouldn't say that, we we offset our cost with all, I mean, we offset our cost with all of our development. It's all of our development plans.
Right, I just didn't know. The reason. They're giving it over for annexations for developments, I didn't know, you know.
We also needed to be serious.
Okay. Just action, that was substantial, so.
What was?
I wanna take over the world, but.
Yeah, me too.
I don't think that's gonna deter any, I mean.
Okay.
Most of the time, these are large landowners that are bringing in hundred acres plus. They're probably have already spent that much on preliminary fees or preliminary drawings. Pretty small expense in the.
In the whole scheme. Okay.
What what would, what's with the major swings in equipment? It's like, this big one, sweets, street sweeper's an extra hundred dollars an hour, we get a better piece of equipment, I mean, and then. This hydro vector is half down, so I'm just wondering, like, you seem, is that normal? It seem out of whack, like the. this hydro vector is half, it went down. So, I'm just wondering, like, you seem, is that normal? It seem out of whack, like the.
I thought it was because they were using the other equipment anyway to go with it or something like that.
Like skid steer is double.
And this is only if we have to bill that use out to somebody. So, so it's like if we have to go onto a private property or something like that.
Okay.
And a lot of these are FEMA set. Well, we kind of adopted FEMA schedule.
And, and I think there was, you know, a note about that, adjusting those fees per the FEMA schedule.
Yeah, I see that. It's crazy, there's such wild swings.
Well, I appreciate that there are, that, I mean, to cost it out and know that, you know, we're charging the right amount.
And these aren't very hard.
Yeah.
Sure. I will note, um, Julie didn't talk about it, but every year, it seems like, you know, Stuck is questioned about the increase on the park debt fee, and we always say it ties to the, to the formula that we have. And if it ever were to go down or be flat, we'd do that, and just when I highlight, it's going up one percent next year.
I wish you'd gas it up more. Inflation's up. I mean, if, if people's property taxes are going up, their valuation, home valuation's up, you know.
But it's the value on planet land, isn't it? That's what it's basically.
So, and like I mentioned about the water sewer rates, is there in here, we did, so the Met Council fee, you know, that's increasing six point two, three percent. So, that is a large jump in our debt cost in that funding.
Shoot, I wonder if this was on the last report. The water meter thing, the sentence was that we've missed water meeting, the water meter readings, I don't know what's it was, in this report or the last one, I wanted to know what that meant. But, you know, cause we've gone, um, so the technology is, I don't know, let's just call it wireless. But, uh, somehow or another, we've missed some readings.
There are some, some meters that don't get picked up by the towers, and so we're still having to go around manually, either with a truck and get closer to them, to, to actually read it.
Oh, I thought it was in the same sentence as the. I'm trying to see if it was here or there. All right, well, I just didn't, um, understand what it meant that we missed, so. Missed means that somebody didn't get built for their water.
Missed means the tower came.
Missed mean we didn't, didn't read it with the remote system, and we still have some dead spots. They're still getting built.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Unless they reverse their.
Yes.
Which we will catch.
Eventually.
Any other questions on the fee schedule? There's a lot of notes in there, I know, so.
Yeah, no, which, I appreciate all the time.
And just a reminder, we're only highlighting the changes that.
Right.
Thirty, thirty.
Charges.
Yeah.
I guess I'll move on then to the, uh, third quarter financial report, and that says second quarter in the heading, sorry about that.
Five, six, seven.
Six, seven.
Oh, okay, never mind. So, um, just highlights again, uh, licenses and permits, even though they seem, they are down from our prior years. We are at ninety eight percent of budget for just in that revenue category, wanted to point that out. So, in, I know there's typically not a lot of activity in October, November, December, but, um, we've already pretty much met that goal. Um, intergovernmental, we're at ninety nine percent of budget, and, um, the, the police and fires today, aid money came in more, but we always do budget amendments for those, the fire aid is, is the thing faster. By early, um, charges for services were at seventy one percent of the budget. Again, in, in looking at these, you know, seventy five percent is our benchmark for September, so. Not too far off there. Development contract revenue and the, uh, construction projects, that is down, that was, you know, part of even the twenty twenty four budget, um, we're down five hundred seventy seven thousand in their development contract construction um, revenue compared to last year for the same period, so we're seeing that drop. It's just not as much development happening. Court fines are at seventy five percent of budget. So, basically, and you know, as you know, taxes twice a year to get that penis, so to be at fifty four percent is, we're good on that. Um, looking at the expenditures, personnel is actually, um, for third quarters at forty eight percent. Um, so that's good, and I imagine a lot of that has to do with vacancies, um, not being filled, for the most part. Um, motor fuels, it's a tough one, uh, we're already at ninety six percent of the annual budget. Street chemicals, uh, also, that one is at ninety five percent of budget, so, um, depending on how the stores, salt storage, if we've got enough to, and how the weather cooperates for the next couple of months, we'll see. Electric and gas, that's at seventy percent of budget, so that's, you know, kind of a nice offset, less than where we'd be, but of course, we're coming into the higher months. Other things of note, we do have finance department, um, the staff transitioning, but we are, we also added the temporary staffing to, um, cover Laura Miller's position while we're doing all the CRP planning and implementation. See. Like I said, there's lots, lots of notes on this one, too. We did, we've got forestry now being reported here in the general fund, or it was in the fire mental resources fund before. So, um, got that tracking now. General fund, so I think we're, we're in a good position, obviously. The expenditures are at seventy five percent of budget, so, um, or just below it, sorry, yeah, seventy five percent.
I don't know how we're gonna keep up with. It's budgeted for single family, for, for residents. We budgeted.
We're not getting hit, we're not.
Three fifty, yeah.
We're not getting hit.
No, we're not. That's why I wanted to focus on the dollars, the dollars that we've taken in.
Yeah.
Like building permits, we're already, you know, and it's because of the commercial.
Yeah.
The, um, what's the name of it? The co-op by, um, Zana.
Mm-hmm, Astoria.
They applied for their, their building permit.
Nice.
And I think that's ninety one units.
How do we count them? Cause they're.
It counts as.
Just not.
It counts as one permit, but it's in the apartment.
In the apartment.
It's not in this one.
Even though they're individually owned.
Yeah.
And Astoria, um, we're not sure if it's gonna come in.
We're not sure if it's gonna come in.
We won't know until.
But it's good news that they've applied for, which means they're getting closer to.
Yeah.
So, on the general fund, any other questions with the, the highlights that were in the memo? Um, communication fund, um, revenues are continuing to be lower than historical, and they're trending down. Twenty four thousand from the prior year. Expenditures are up forty two thousand, and you know, this is, as you're familiar with, it's, it's the trend from the cable, so. Water, everything else, uh, looking at the other, obviously liquor funds doing well, water and sewer, um, on track. It's a lot of grant revenue, I mean, obviously in the environmental resources fund, you know, their budget at one point three million. A lot of those projects, um, that state funding, you know, it's more of a cash flow thing for us as far as sometimes we're making the payments out to the contractors, people read the funding, depending on how that's set up. But most of it, you know, we request the reimbursement funding, um, after that final contract payment's been. Anything else on those, and just, again, looking at high level.
No, I, I just appreciate all the summary statements, kind of helps to.
And it's nice seeing where the, the net position is of each one, too. Yes, I agree. And even though, you know, for some of them, even though the, the net profit or loss is a negative, then in that case, but the fund balance is very healthy. Like in the uh, environmental resource fund, for, for instance.
How does this, what does this mean to you for end of year?
That, that we're on track, um, that it, there's no big surprises, um. We've got, and as usual, there's a lot of budget amendments, um, to, to, to be done, but that's, it's not atypical, so.
You feel comfortable that we'll meet our end of year goals?
Yeah, I do, yeah. Um, as we get, you know, even if we get slammed with a horrible icy season, you know, it's, it's not, that's, that cost is not astronomical.
How about for next year's budget? What's, what are the implications? I mean, if we're on target, but I mean, you're seeing trends, particularly in permits, so what's this?
And that will, I mean, just with the Astoria thing, uh, the Astoria development alone, that would be a nice cushion. If it comes in in twenty twenty three, it'll, it'll help our fund balance at the end of the year. Comes in twenty twenty four, it'll help, because those, we budgeted very conservatively on development revenue, so. There's things that we don't, we can't control, and we're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think next, I think next year will be more likely than this year, but single family.
I agree.
Turn it back to the twenty 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 one.
Sure.
Well, it just sweet, it's cool there, I don't think so.
Well, isn't it just about available land, too? I mean.
We're, you have enough of the existing plats that we could have another big year. Where, where, where we are seeing slowdowns is in new plats. Those have really come to a halt.
Mm-hmm.
So, that doesn't bode well for a year or two down the road, three years down the road, unless they catch up.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, um, moving on. In short, future discussion, anything? Many city administrator updates.
Um, for the arena, it's just a small little update. We're still working on, um, working with the contractors on, um, the, a solution or for the, uh, break concrete. So, um, I believe they're having, did Bron already come back out, or are they have Bron come back out? And if you noticed in your documentation from the month before, it would have said that Bron didn't take into account the, um, they didn't, they didn't look at the, um, it's the right term. The documents that would have said how we wanted it built, you know, for the ring. And so they gave an opinion based on concrete. Does that make sense? And so, it's not based on what our needs were for that concrete to be. How it was supposed to be mixed and how it settled in, et cetera, so, um, unfortunately, you know, we, we have to work with our attorney, and it was gonna be delayed, it was gonna be delayed, but I don't have a solution for you yet, cause they're still trying to work and getting all the proper, um, documentation put together for our, our attorney to be able to go back to the contractor and, and see if we can come up with a solution that works for all of us.
Just as a side note for arena stuff, Justin and I had a positive conversation with Glenn Hossi about extending his investment in the arenas, we'll know more details, but.
We, uh, it got brought up at our meeting a little bit, but yeah, um, since it wasn't really anything but.
Yeah, there's nothing concrete.
Concrete, I, I wasn't gonna.
It's not just work on creating this situation.
Unintended. But other than that, the arenas are running great, everything's on track, budget's doing well, da, da, da. So, I mean, that's kind of like the third quarter financial report, we're, we're just running along, so, everything's going well.
Uh, yeah. Had Dakota nine eleven board meeting, uh, end of September, uh, pretty routine, was, the agenda was short. Uh, proving a couple of their agreements with their, their line workers and supervisors. Uh, there were a few things in the executive director's report, uh, there were, if you remember, there were three outages of their admin lines, and the nine one one service never went down, but the admin line and Frontier and a consultant at Frontier's working with, they're working on that. Um, it could impact the full line cost, ultimately, but not a lot. Uh, they got legislative, a one-time legislative funding, a one-time corporation of three hundred and four thousand dollars. Um, that's gonna go towards next gen, nine one one readiness and some cybersecurity cost savings. And then we had a conversation about the, uh, fee structure as it relates to townships and rural areas. Whether they, you know, what the county's paying, uh, what they're gonna do in terms of trying to spread costs. So, those were the, uh, big things that we, uh, yeah.
You don't need that, we'll pick up the township costs.
No, the townships are that. Um, because, I mean, right now, the county picks up those costs.
They do.
So, we pay, you know, county tax, so we're actually in some fashion P or some of that.
Right.
So, the idea is to have those rural areas that are townships and are governed, um, cover their costs.
Who's, who's on I thirty five?
I'm, I'm just curious what they're talking about.
It was all MBTA suburban transit this one.
Oh.
Excited, except Dan Keely trying to tell me, you guys gotta join MBTA, so.
I, yeah.
Very impressive.
It's all, it's a, it's a.
I was on the Met Council.
We're good.
On behalf of you, we're.
DBB is wound down. They're gonna write us a check for fifty nine thousand dollars. Our cut of what's remaining, so, I'm assuming this is gonna communications fund for.
It's already spent.
She already came in.
Oh, did?
Yeah, it's gone, I think we put it.
But, if you ever wanna go to the archives, they're in farming time.
Yeah, for now.
In case anyone was looking for a DBB archive.
It's now.
Hope our fiber survives.
Yeah, I have so much fiber that's down, and then I just got an email from Frontier, they wanna renew this under fiber, like.
Really, they do?
You get a notice from MetroNet that they're in your area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I got a flyer, man.
That's one of the biggest questions I'm getting, is about fiber. Who's, who's got fiber? Where are the lines?
There's, it's, we will have an excess of fiber in life, though, by the next five years.
For as many years as we heard, that there's no options, you know, charter is the only option, why can't the city have any other options? Now they're tearing up everybody's charter three times.
Front, Frontier's got a new product called, I'll send it to the sky.
I hadn't really heard much about MetroNet, though, so that's why I didn't know if that was.
They've gotten better.
Oh, they don't email you? Bye, definitely. Uh, all right, well, with that, I'll take it. Much good, Jared.
Much.
Second.
All in fair, say hi.
Hi.
Post.